Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, December 10, 2015. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty of this wonderful world.
Thank you. At this time, we have a couple presentations, so I'd like to first call on Commissioner Carol Gillespie for an Eagle Scout presentation for Mr. Alexander Wilson.
First of all, welcome, Alex. Glad to have you. This is exciting. I just was going through your booklet that we got at your ceremony, and in the six years that I've been Commissioner, from your troop alone, and then we have St. Paul's right next door, we've had 12 Eagle Scouts, just in that six years. And that doesn't even count what we've had in 348, whatever, next door, 304. Okay? So tonight, to Alexander R. Wilson, a proud and grateful Abington Township salutes you on obtaining the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. In attaining this honor, you have earned assorted merit badges which attest to your leadership qualities and your contribution to our community. Your chosen project was an important undertaking for Abington Township. The hours you spent in organizing and leading a team that dedicated hours of upgrading the garden in front of the Sisters of St. Joseph Convent on Fairhill Avenue for neighbors and residents to enjoy is a testament to your community spirit. We, the Board of Commissioners, join your family, friends, community leaders, and fellow members of 304 in congratulating you on this milestone. We wish you continuing success and further fulfillment in the years to come. Congratulations, Alex. Also, his father, Pete, where were we? Oh, Pete is back here. And unfortunately, Anne Marie, his mom, is not here, and we know it takes everybody in that family to work this. And his older brother, Mark, is also an Eagle Scout. And I have this list of achievements, I couldn't even begin to go over, it's two pages of yours. It's just fantastic. I don't know how you have time to do all this and still earn this award. We're all very proud of you, and congratulations again, and I know you're going to be a great success in everything you do.
I want to thank you for recognizing me, and I look forward to continuing helping our community. And I want to thank everything you do to help out the fire department, I'm a member of Station 300, Walden Fire Company, so thank you for the support you give us in our work to help the community.
Congratulations, Pete and Anne Marie. Great job, two sons, both firemen, volunteers, love those volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President, Commissioner Stephen Klein, for a presentation to Dr. Karen Wiley Sandler, Penn State.
Do you want to join your president?
Yes, sir.
So there's not too many people here who know Dr. Sandler, who don't know Dr. Sandler, and I've got to tell you, this is a bittersweet presentation. If I could figure out a way to wave a wand and have you not go away and go into retirement, I would do it in a heartbeat. But that being said, Karen has been an incredible partner to work with in Abington, both for me personally and, I would say, for the entire Township staff, including the school district. Her energy and her commitment to our community, commitment to the Township, and commitment to the general population is, you know, second to none, and you'll be sorely missed. So just to give you a flavor of who Karen is, she served as Chief Executive, Penn State Abington, since 1994. She is the first recipient of an endowed chancellor's chair at Penn State. Before moving, do you remember all this stuff? If you don't, just stop me. Before moving to Penn State, Dr. Sandler served as Vice President and Dean of Economic Affairs at Junianna College in Huntington, PA. She earned her PhD in Romance Languages, that didn't get you that far, did it?
No.
At the University of Pennsylvania, and taught full-time as a tenured faculty member at the University of Vermont from 1969 to 1985, when she accepted her first full-time administrative appointment as Associate Dean at the College of Gettysburg. Dr. Sandler has written and spoken on French Renaissance literature, curriculum transformation, writing across the curriculum, women in risk, and leadership. In 1987, she became a member of the State Planning Committee of the American Council of Education Network, designed to advance women in higher education, and served for more than five years as a state co-coordinator for the project. She remains involved in the activities of ACA nationally and locally. She is active with the Middle States Association of Schools and Colleges, serving in her role in her roles such as periodic review evaluator, visiting team chair, visiting team member, and conference presenter on planning and assessment. When did you do anything else? Yeah, I got you. Dr. Sandler serves as a Board Director of Eastern Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Committee of Abington Township, and is a founding member of the Business Resource Center, Resource Information Center, an economic development partnership between Abington Township, Penn State Abington, and the Eastern Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. She also serves as a member of the Executive Advisory Committee for the Eastern Center for Arts and Technology, and a member of the Montgomery County Workforce Investment Board. She has served as a member of boards supporting the arts, economic development, education, equity, and community planning. Dr. Sandler has been recognized for her leadership by the Eastern Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, the Poor Richard Club, Abington Township, the Montgomery County Chapter of March at Dimes, and by the members of the Penn State Abington Class of 1998. Do you want to read more? There's like four more pages. Anyhow, I'm not going to read more, but one of the greatest things about Karen is she's brought a lot of changes to Abington Township. She helped renovate some of the fields in the Township through the collaboration of Penn State. She also helped to increase the awareness of Penn State Abington and make it into the university it is now. And most of us don't even think about Penn State Maine when we think about Penn State Abington. She started bachelor degrees in American Studies, Business, Criminal Justice, Integrated Arts, Science, Letter, Art and Science, English, Information Science and Technology, History, Psychological, and you don't want forever, there's no architecture on, you have to work on that. So, I, no, no. But the important thing is, when I grew up, it used to be Penn State O'Gons, and most people would just go to Penn State O'Gons for two years and then go up to main campus. That's not the case anymore. She made it a place where people can come, feel connected to the community for four years, whatever, how many times it is, no matter how much time they're there, and really give back to the community. And that's important, because two years is just not enough to become part of the community. And what she has done to advance Penn State Abington, and in turn, advance the community, is really important, and you will be sorely missed, and hopefully not going away too far. And I'm going to give the microphone over to President Luger.
Thank you, Stephen. Dr. Karen Wiley Sandler, on behalf of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners, with profound appreciation for over two decades of outstanding service and dedication to both Penn State Abington and the Abington community. Abington Township will be forever grateful for your vision, creativity, insight, and guidance. The Board of Commissioners of Abington Township is honored to recognize your exemplary leadership and selfless acts of time and dedication from which we have all benefited. So, on behalf of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners, staff, and family, we present you with this certificate of commendation. Thank you.
Stephen, yes, Stephen?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing my work here in the Township, and I want to thank the folks in the audience who are here for their support, I'm sure, of Penn State Abington as our university in this community. It has been a joy, so, you know, listing things that I've done, you all know it because you're in public service, it's just part of the joy of the day, to be part of a township like this. And I have to say how grateful I am that Penn State Abington is in Abington, because this is such a forward-looking township and such a devoted group of commissioners and the volunteers we have in this community. And so we have really enjoyed partnering with so many organizations in Abington, and I will miss you all too, but I really thank you so much for many years of working together. Thank you.
For those of you who didn't see her biography and resume that Stephen had in front of him, her bio was longer than her height. I mean, it's outstanding bio, you have to see it to believe it. We would still be reading it for another five minutes, so. Dr. Sandler, thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to get approval of the minutes, and I call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luger. I'd like to make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for November 12, 2015.
Second. The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners and staff? Any from residents? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Thomas Bowman, Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee has no business at this time, so I turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of the Code Enforcement Land Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1 subdivision, SD 1504, Gordon B. and Christina M. Cox, 1544 Cloverly Lane. This is a motion to approve the subdivision application of Gordon B. and Christina M. Cox, owners of the property located at 1544 Cloverly Lane. The applicants propose to subdivide the 2.98 acre site into two parcels. Lot number one is shown to contain the existing single-family dwelling on a parcel of 1.98 acres in size. Lot number two is not proposed to be developed at this time, and is shown at one acre in lot size. Both lots will comply with the dimensional requirements of Section 301.3 of the zoning ordinance. The properties are zoned in the R1 Residential District in Ward Number One of the Township of Abington. The motion's subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Next, we have CE2, Ordinance Number 2100, Stormwater Management Ordinance, Tookany-Takoni-Frankford Watershed Stormwater Management Plan. This is a motion to advertise a public hearing to be held on Thursday, January 14, 2016, at 7:30 PM on Ordinance Number 2100 entitled Stormwater Management Ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
No comment.
Commissioner Klein.
Larry, will you reach out to Sue Meyer of the EAC? I was with her last night at DVR PC, and she mentioned that she had gone through the stormwater management. She works for Pennsylvania Environmental Council.
Okay.
And she had gone through it, and she had some comments that she, so if you could reach out to her, that'd be great.
Reach out to her tomorrow. I will do so. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Finally, we have CE3, Ordinance Number 2102, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 162, Zoning, Section 2102, Flood Plane Conservation Overlay District. This is a motion to advertise a public hearing to be held on Thursday, January 14, 2016, at 7:30 PM on Ordinance Number 2102, the Flood Plane Ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes our business for this evening.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luger. PS1 is a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2103, Amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article III Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2104, Capital Project for County Radio Purchase, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Staff?
I do have a comment.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Okay. I was reading an article from, thank you, I was reading an article from Horsham Township, and it seems that they got a $500,000 loan, no interest, for five years, so it's basically kind of free money, and I was wondering where we stand on that. That certainly would help us a lot with our budget, and maybe we wouldn't have to make some cuts.
Commissioner, that situation is available to all municipalities in Montgomery County, and is an option that we can take advantage of if we decide to do that. We have been preparing for this for several years by putting money aside each year in our capital improvement fund, and I'll refer to, turn over to our Township Manager in case he wants to add anything, but that is not unique to Horsham Township, it is part of the entire process, and...
I read that in the article, that we're all available. I just wondered why we hadn't heard about it sooner, since our budget is so tight, and 500 and just about 1,000 is, would be good money for us.
Actually, Commissioner, under this ordinance, we are taking advantage of that program. Basically, the county has taken the leadership to spec out the police radios, purchase the police radios at a cheaper cost by buying them in bulk, and then allowing the municipalities to pay back their respective costs over a five-year period, interest-free, and we will be doing so. So we are taking advantage of the program, and this ordinance does authorize us to do so.
But I didn't see that in the budget anywhere. That's 501,000, just about. I'm not, I'm wondering why...
That's correct. We've been, as Chief Kelly has indicated, we've been funding for police radios for a number of years. We probably have over a quarter million dollars already put away in capital for that purpose, and this program allows us to just pay that out over a five-year period, interest-free. So it was included in the capital budget, it was part of our capital budget discussion, but it really directly didn't impact the general fund.
Commissioner, just adding on to what the manager was saying, it is not in the budget as a result of that. Because of that preparation, because we're using that method, it is not in the general fund budget, otherwise that would have to be another significant, significant thing that would add to the budget. So exactly what you're saying we should be doing is, I think, exactly what the administration says we should be doing.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And PS3 is a motion to advertise Ordinance Number 2106, Amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article III Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, Section 27, Parking Time Limited, and Section 28, Special Purpose Parking Zones, per adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on January 14, 2016, at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
Commissioner Farren. Thank you, President Luger. I just want to share with the Board of Commissioners how happy the residents are. They're very, very appreciative that after so many years of parking issues, to put it lightly, they are seeing some steps to be taken that are going to help them. And I think it's important to note, they recognize this is one of a number of things that are going to be taking place. They've been very good with each other with, recently, obviously, with me catching up on what's going on to address the parking issues, and this is not going to be a panacea that's going to cure all the problems. But to that end, there was a resident on the block who wasn't able to be here last weekend, had some questions about the timing of the 8:00 to 6:00. And in particular, some questions and some issues that she thought were important to note were not brought up specifically. And the neighbors talked about it during the course of the week. I followed up with Manager LaFever and solicited a check on the possibility of doing this, and the residents would like us to consider changing it from 8:00 to 6:00 to 6:00 to 6:00. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to change the ordinance as written to read instead of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, two-hour parking, two-hour parking, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and I so move.
I think before we get a second on that, I see a question or a look on the chief's face. Is this something I would have to go back to committee chief?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, no, it would not have to, from a legal standpoint, and although this is the first we're hearing about that, I can't think of a reason why that won't work.
Yeah, and we were going through, I think, just yesterday, I got, I was able to get through, I kind of worked my way up, I talked to Officer Posey, and then I went to Manager LaFever, and then I went to the solicitor, trying to make sure this would be an option. So it kind of happened over the course of the last seven days, and it took a couple of days for me to get back and forth with the neighbors. So I apologize when I get into specifically, chief, with the details of this, but I think it's a good...
Hey, can I just ask a question to you? So I guess if somebody has their car parked in front of their house, they're going to have to get up at 6:00 AM and move it, as opposed to move it at 8:00 AM?
With the residents?
Yeah.
No, the residents would, as I understand it, after talking to Officer Posey, the residents themselves would be receiving stickers that would permit them to stay there.
So if they have a guest, then the guests would have to move it.
If they had a guest, there would be, there's accommodations for that, for those particular residents on that lot.
And that's what the residents want? They want 6:00 AM?
Yes.
Interesting.
That's the feedback I received over the course of the week. And they went back and forth, I know they talked to each other, and back and forth on email.
Just to fill in one of Commissioner Markman's questions, everybody in an area that has this kind of parking restriction, they get a certain, maybe one or two guest passes per household, so for that exact purpose.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Speaker, I was in discussion...
Oh, that was it.
Okay, that was it.
That was all.
Any other, someone raise their hand on staff? I'm sorry. So Commissioner Farren, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to change the Ordinance 2106 to read two-hour parking, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. We have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amended motion.
Yeah. We're voting on the amend, we're voting on the amendment, and then on the whole...
Then on the advertisement, second.
Right, so the way we've been doing this in the past, you're voting on whether or not to accept the amendment from what came out of committee, so there's a motion and a second on the table right now to accept the amendment, and if it passes, then you'll vote on, which I think has already been a motion and a second.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we're voting on the, to accept the amended motion.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Now we have to vote on...
Authorization, advertise.
Authorization, advertise, okay. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. I'd like to call on Commissioner John Speaker, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, Public Affairs has just one formal item, PA1, Abington Township's reimbursement to HUD. This is a motion to approve Abington Township's reimbursement to HUD with non-federal funds in the amount of $125,130.14 for non-compliance with federal regulations. HUD issued two findings during its onsite monitoring visit conducted January 26 to 29, 2015, which are, one, the 2013 after-school program fell below the minimum standard and has to reimburse $16,500, and two, the owner-occupied rehabilitation program could not provide proof of cost reasonableness for contract modifications of six properties in the amount of $180,630.14 from fund balance, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Heckard.
Just a question. Evan, is there any update between when we discussed this in committee and tonight?
Yes, Commissioner. As Township Manager LaFever reported, we are cautiously optimistic that we won't be hitting the ceiling of the $125,000. Today, I found some information where the federal government made an error of $25,000, which will be adjusted, but I will need the next two or three weeks to continue making analysis and putting together a response to HUD to substantiate the claim that we were in compliance, but that's the work in front of us, and I can report at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. Perhaps for anybody that didn't see the committee meeting, this happened before you were in this position, correct? And you have to research the files? Is that what's going on?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm unfamiliar with the activities that happened, so it takes me time to bring myself up to speed.
So you're researching. Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good work, Mr. Schrader. Any other, Commissioner Speaker?
Director Schrader, just to clarify, that $25,000 error, again, assuming, you know, I know you're still doing the research to prove that we really shouldn't be liable for any of that, but that $25,000 error would be in our favor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Director Schrader.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Now, before you finish up, Mr. LaFever, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, if this is the proper time, to authorize a solicitor, our solicitor, to oppose an application that's going to be upcoming to the zoning hearing board meeting this coming Tuesday by Verizon for a cell tower in Ward Five. And to do so, I understand from our solicitor, I would have to make a motion at the Public Affairs Committee this evening to get approval from the full board. And this is for a zoning hearing board application for the Commissioners who are here tonight. We had an informal meeting last night at the request of Mr. Larry Mateo, Code Enforcement, and Mr. Mark Pennacott, met with the residents, heard a proposal from Verizon to put a cell tower on Old Welsh Road where the Fox Fuel location is. There was some opposition from the residents, and as such, I stated to the solicitor for Verizon that we would be challenging this application this coming Tuesday in front of the zoning hearing board. So at this time, I'm asking for board approval to get our solicitor to represent the township in this application this coming Tuesday.
Motion to appeal. Yes, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to appeal it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Or any questions? I'm sorry.
The property is at 2442 Old Welsh Road in Willow Grove.
Right, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioner Gillespie?
Thank you again. I do want to just note, because we did have this in our ward when Mike was Commissioner, and whoever it is, whichever company it is, does tend to put, what do you call them, Larry Mateo, what do you call them, on the boosters, I guess? On the top of other telephone poles or electric poles, and they do make a little noise, so just so the people are aware that these all of a sudden just show up, because I've had comments from my constituents about those. So just letting you know.
Well, Commissioner, that is their intent, to eventually, it's going to take them two years to get this through the township. As you know, they are in the Glen Side area now, and they are going to go throughout the township.
Point of clarification...
I just thought it's good to know, for you, Commissioner.
One thing I wanted to add, this application is for... One thing I wanted to add, this application is for a temporary, a two-year time period that they want to mount this cell tower on Old Welsh Road. And their intention is to ultimately find a permanent...
Permanent application, that is correct, sir.
And Larry, you just want to elaborate on, this is the result of the existing cell tower being mandated to come down by the Turnpike Commission.
By the Turnpike Commission by February of 2016.
Right, so they're, they're on a tight schedule...
They're just trying to get something, looking for an area to cover the Abington and Willow Grove section of Abington Township.
And currently, the tower is located on the turnpike?
On the turnpike, but there are existing towers on Moreland Road in Upper Moreland that they could co-locate. And that's what we're saying, why don't you just do that, especially for the cost and the time?
Right. So we just feel that it's unnecessary to force something in a residential area, predominantly residential area, for a two-year period, for the sake of convenience on their part. Yes, Commissioner Schreiber?
So if this does not occur, will it affect people's reception and, I mean, is there going to then be like a backlash of people?
That's what they're, that's what they're saying, yes.
That's what they are saying.
Yep, that is what they're saying.
But there's other alternatives that they could pursue, and that's what they're, we're hoping they would do.
So the neighbors understand that, that they're...
Oh, they understand. They heard this last evening. Yes.
Katie, any other comments from Commissioners? I thank you for your support. Any comments from staff or residents? Yes, name and address for the record, please.
My name's Margaret Palmer, and I live at 1660 Park Avenue, Willow Grove, at the, and I live in the middle block of Park Avenue. And I missed the meeting last night, but I'm hearing you talking. The towers, would it cause any health issues? You know, like radiation or something?
Well, that was discussed last night, and it's going to be part of the conversation of the applicant at the Tuesday meeting. I don't think we, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Taylor, are in any position to answer that question technically, because we're not the applicant. So I think it would be better served if you came to the Tuesday zoning hearing board meeting and asked that question of the applicant.
All right. Now, also, will there be petitions going around the neighborhood? If some of the neighbors don't want the towers there, would we be able to, any kind of petitions?
If I may, Commissioner?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. The petitions would not be coming from the township, they would just be the residents that they would like to start them, excuse my back, I'm just...
That's all right.
If they would like to start them, as long as, go around, get them, get the name and address, and why they oppose, and then they could just present it next week, Tuesday evening here, seven o'clock.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And lastly, this was a somewhat quick application that was forced on the township. So with all that said, I appreciate the support of the board. And if there are no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And, Mr. President, that concludes our Public Affairs agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, I'd like to turn the agenda over to Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. FC 1, motion to A, approve the October expenditure that was previously circulated to the board in the amount of $3,493,228.90, and sows and wages in the amount of $2,602,951.3. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of January 2016. An ISO move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sutcliffe?
Yes.
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 Markman?
Yes.
Carrick?
Yes.
Gosey?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Heckler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Yes.
F C 2, motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for October 2015 as previously circulated to the board. Advance and travel expense reports were $0.00 and $6,547.47, respectively. Ten-month expenses totaled $36,028.11, and ISO move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
F C 3, motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue expense, activity, and petty cash balances for the month of October as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of October 2015 were $863.55 and $2,563.96, respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and disbursements for the month of October 2015 were $3,040.00 and $2,930.00, respectively. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
F C 4, motion to authorize the budget transfers for the year 2015. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
F C 5, motion to authorize an expenditure from the unallocated permanent improvement fund balance, account number 07000005999, in the amount of $45,854, the 2015 allotment to be distributed equally, $9,170.80 each among the five volunteer fire companies serving Abington Township. An ISO move.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
F C 6, motion to authorize the township staff to notify Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau that the township will utilize Northeast Tax Revenue for the collection of 2015 and 2014 delinquent real estate taxes. An ISO move.
Second.
Moved, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And one last item, Treasurer Blumenthal is not with us tonight. His report is available for the public upon request at the manager's office and is in everybody's packet tonight. And that concludes our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. I'd like to call on Mr. Commissioner Tom Heckler, Director of the Pension Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Pension Committee uncharacteristically has four items of business this evening. The first is P E N S 1, and this is Resolution Number 15-041, amending police pension document pertaining to member contributions. And this motion is to set police pension contribution rate for 2016 at 5% of compensation, and ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Next, we have P E N S 2. This is Ordinance Number 2107, Retirement Pension Benefit. And this is a motion to advertise Ordinance Number 2107, amending the non-uniform pension plan to include an Act 44 Deferred Retirement Option, otherwise known as DROP, for consideration by the Board of Commissioners at our January 14th, 2016 public meeting. An ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Staff? Residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Our next item is P E N S 3, Resolution Number 15-038, Defined Contribution Pension Benefit. And this motion is to adopt Resolution Number 15-038, adding a defined contribution benefit plan, pension benefit, to the non-uniform pension plan for all employees hired after January 1, 2016. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And finally, we have P E N S 4, Resolution Number 15-039, amending definition of employee under the Defined Benefit Pension Plan. This motion is to approve Resolution Number 15-039, redefining the definition of an employee under the non-uniform pension plan, effectively closing the Defined Benefit provision to any employee hired after December 31, 2015. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And so ends our uncharacteristically long agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Heckler. That concludes our formal agenda. If I'm not mistaken, yes, it does. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, are there any comments from any residents? Yes, sir. Name and address, if you come to the podium, please. And if you could adhere to a three-minute...
Good evening. My name is Dennis Miranda, Executive Director of the Wissahican Valley Watershed Association. And thank you for calling upon me. I am making the rounds among the municipalities that encompass the Wissahican Valley watershed. I'd like to bring your attention to two items that we're having upcoming in our agenda. On January 22 of next year, we're having a collaborative approach to Watershed Restoration and Protection Finance Forum workshop to be held in White Marsh Township, sponsored by the Wissahican Valley Watershed Association and the Environmental Finance Center out of the State University of Maryland. This joint effort is to help municipalities look at alternative ways to address stormwater management. And we're doing this as a service for municipal leaders, municipal officials, planners, engineers, and their consultants. So that particular session is to take place at 10:00 AM at the White Marsh Parks and Recreation Building on 4021 Joshua Road in Lafayette Hill, Pennsylvania. So the goal there is to have everyone involved. EFC of Maryland will provide technical advice. They have a 30-year record of providing the same sort of economic and financial advice to municipalities and authorities in the Eastern Seaboard. And they are partially funded by the EPA, so they're here to help out local jurisdictions. Also, by that same token, I want to follow up on a distribution of an email by Drew Shaw, planner at the Montgomery County Planning Commission, to all municipalities and discharges in the watershed that there is a resolution afloat, looking for municipalities to opt into the TMDL Alternative Stakeholder Process that has been convened by the DEP and facilitated by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And we're all party to that process, and we'd like to see this go forward. The resolution enables municipalities and discharges to participate in a collaborative effort, supported by the DEP and the EPA and the Montgomery County Planning Commission, along with all municipalities and super authorities in the region, and a small group of academic institutions such as Temple University and Villanova University, and nonprofit conservation organizations like ourselves. So I have copies of both the flyers and the residents here for your consideration. And that is all there is to it. Well, thank you very much, and merry Christmas.
Okay, you can give that literature to Township Manager LaFever. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? I do not see anyone having signed up to speak, so last call for any comments from residents. All right, any comments from staff? If not, we'll start with Commissioner, closing comments, we'll start with Commissioner Dennis Appone.
Just as a reminder to my residents, this Sunday, we're going to have Breakfast with Santa at Steve's VFW, North Penn VFW. We're partnering with them. And this is our last event for this year. We have seven scheduled for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Really just want to wish all our Abington Township neighbors all the very best for the remainder of Hanukkah, for Christmas and for New Year's joy, and especially peace this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to thank everybody who donated to the turkey drive this past Thanksgiving. Did an outstanding job in stocking up the food bank, getting some hungry local families fed for the holidays. It was over 50 turkeys, an outstanding job on the part of everyone. I'm also going to help out this weekend with some friends, again, for collecting new and unwrapped toys for the continued holiday season, and also non-perishable food. So if anyone's interested in that, dropping off or helping out, it's Saturday, December 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, at the Brownstone at Sunrise of Abington, which is 1867 Susquehanna Road here in Abington. And if you have any questions or anything, just, you know, please don't hesitate to contact me, or if you know a family in need, let me know, too. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Just happy holidays to everybody, and the holiday miracle of tonight. I'm very appreciative.
Thank you. Commissioner Markman.
No comment, thanks.
Commissioner Kalanowski.
Merry Christmas and a happy new year, and safe and happy holidays for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Boone.
Just thanks to the Roslyn Valley Business Association for sponsoring the Christmas lights along Eastern Road. They look nice. And if anyone's interested in helping out, certainly Bridget Sporaccio at Riviera is the treasurer of that group, and she would accept any contributions. But thanks to them for their good work and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite everyone here to our McKinley Holiday Celebration being held at the McKinley Firehouse, Number One, in Ward Three. Again, everyone is invited. We're going to have snacks, treats, and a visit by the jolly big guy. Also included in that will be some antique fire truck rides. And I will also be cooking some hot treats and beverages, so good thing this is at a firehouse. And we'll also be collecting some unwrapped gifts and toys for some needy families in the neighborhood. So please, you're all invited to stop by. That is this Saturday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And as always, when driving through Abington, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, Commissioner Luker. I just want to thank Zanna for taking time out of his busy schedule this past weekend to come down and visit Glen Side. I know there are a lot of children who are happy to see him and share their lists with him. I want to send some prayers and support out to a little girl in Glen Side who is struggling down at Chop right now, and I want her and her family to know we're thinking about her. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
I just want to say thank you to anyone that participated in the Catholic Village Christmas. It was mobbed. It was wonderful, and it was, it was just a great night. The weather was like, I felt like it was spring. So thank you for anybody that participated. And again, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Heckler.
Thank you, President Luker. I just wanted to remind folks that this coming Wednesday, December 16th, marks the official grand opening of the Corner Bakery Cafe in the Abington Shopping Center on Old York Road. And I also wanted to take a moment to wish my colleagues on the board, the staff, everyone here, and those watching at home a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Larry Jones.
Thank you. Want to send a, pass along a thanks from residents on Osceola Avenue to Lieutenant Warner and Officer Alfred for taking care of a, of a parking car situation. They passed along a Facebook thank you self. You can send that along to them. Also wishing everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and looking forward to the twists, turns, and adventures of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. This past Tuesday, was it, Tara?
Yes.
Yeah, Tara and I attended the.
Monday.
Monday, Monday. See how the time goes by. Attended the Greater Valley Forge Transportation Management Authority, and we were nominated for a Communities' Emotion of Star Award for the bike lanes on Valley Road. And Tara and I accepted the award in, in behalf of the township. So it was great to get that and be recognized. There was some talk also about people understanding, knowing that we were coming up with a master bike plan. And we're excited about that. I also wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. We're on the fourth night of Hanukkah. My house still smells like oil. And I was just informed that I have to cook another five pounds of lakas on Sunday, so I think my house is going to stink until Christmas. So, but everybody's welcome to come over on Sunday. I'll be making them all day. So, and if it's going to stink once, it as well stink for the whole day. So, Happy Holidays.
Thank you. And lastly, I want to take the opportunity to extend, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa, and lastly, a Happy Holiday to all. We collectively want to thank all township employees for your dedicated hard work and commitment to your jobs and to Abington Township. This is what makes Abington the township that it is. It's what you do, you folks do individually and collectively that make the township, in my opinion, first and foremost in Montgomery County. Lastly, along with my colleagues, we wish all of you and your families a safe and prosperous New Year, but most importantly, a New Year of good health to you and your families. With that, I thank you, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. That's a move. Thank you. Thank you for attending meetings adjourned.